Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held October 17, 2017 at 6:00 PM. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Norman is out sick. Vice Mayor Howdige?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is brief summary of, excuse me, brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Council have anything to report tonight? Please.
It's been a busy week. We did quite a bit this week. On the last week, Mingus Mountain Republican meeting had three legislators attend. Sylvia Allen, Brenda Barton, and Bob Thorpe were there to answer questions, and it was very informative, as well as, um, Hezekiah Allen was there to fill everybody in about the results of TBR, which was very well received. After that was the City of Cottonwood Annual Volunteer Appreciation Event, which was very well-attended. It's an event that's done every year. It's kind of a picnic event that all of our volunteers, of which we have quite a few in the City of Cottonwood, are able to attend, as well as employees. They have chili cook-off and things like that, and it was just a really nice social interaction instead of the business interaction with our volunteers. Cottonwood Fire Department had, after that, an open house, which was a great success. I think almost all of us here attended. Tosca wasn't able to, the vice mayor, but almost all the council members were there, so it was nice to have that appreciation shown to them. And then, today, we had the Professional Women's Group met for the last time this year in the daytime. They'll have one more evening meeting, and it was the First Annual Make a Difference Awards, and Councilmember Henry was in attendance as well, which I was really glad to see her there. It's just a really neat group of women, and I apologize, I don't have the list of all the nominees. There was a great deal of nominees, and we had two tie for receiving the awards, and they both were given the award, so I'm gonna pull that out and probably bring their names next council meeting. But it was an excellent event to showcase outstanding women in the City of Cottonwood and in Verde Valley as a whole, and what they contribute to our community. It was pretty incredible.
Very good. Thank you. Any other council members?
I'll report just quickly. I was able to tour Cottonwood Oak Creek School District this morning and Daniel Day-Bride Elementary. It was great. Superintendent King took me around, got to meet the principal too at Daniel Day-Bride, so that was very nice. Spent a couple hours in and out of classrooms and meeting with the kiddos, and it was really a good day. It's nice to see the good work that's going on out there. And briefly, I think we all learned that the Fall Carnival was canceled this year. I think we kind of found out a little bit later than we'd hoped, so we struggled to try to get some sponsors on board, and I'm pleased to announce that the Haunted Group came forward with a very generous sponsorship, as well as Verve. So we're going to do a similar festival in Old Town for the kids on Halloween night, so it'll be Tuesday, October 31, from 5:00 to 8:00. And this really came about quickly. I think it was actually Councilmember Henry that was asking questions about what occurred and what we can do about it, so we worked quickly, and she and I have kind of been taking the lead here to make sure that we have something going on for the kids. It will include a couple bouncy houses for the kids, for all ages, and it will include a costume judging contest, and we are really looking for volunteers. So I've got a handful of local, we'll call them celebrities, on board to help judge the costumes. It'll be all ages again, but if there are any council members that want to help out in costume judging or help out with just logistics, it would really be greatly appreciated. Or if we can get someone from the Police Department there to help judge contests, or someone from Fire Department there to help judge the contests, that would be great. And this event will be in the empty lot called Old Town Square, which is just south of Bachi. So in that lot there, and we're really working hard to get the word out, so please share it amongst your friends and let them know that there's gonna be that going on for families, as well as, of course, Safe Night in Old Town, and the Youth Commission is putting on a haunted house at the youth center just across the park here. So there's really a lot, still a lot going on for kids down here for Halloween, so thank you.
I'm gonna be in Oregon, or I would volunteer.
Maybe we could Skype you in, perhaps. All right. And that's all I have. City Manager, have you got anything to report?
Mayor, council members, and I don't know whether you mentioned this, but this doesn't mean that the Old Town Association isn't doing their candy distribution, so...
They're doing that as well, and they've also come on as a sponsor for the other event, too.
Yeah, that'll be coming down. And also, this Friday, the library will be hosting an open house for their new meeting room, which can hold up to about 100 people, and so that's October 20 from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And also, the 2017 Cottonwood Book Fair will be Saturday, October 28, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds. There'll be over 30 participating local authors, and everybody is invited to come by and browse and purchase books for the whole family.
Great.
And that's it for this week.
Okay. All right, moving on then, we're gonna move into presentations. We have Dr. James Perry, the dean of the Verde Valley Campus, update on Yavapai College. Thanks for being here this evening.
My pleasure. Is it possible to... Is it sure?
Pleasure to be here tonight, council members, to give you an update on some of the things that are happening within Yavapai College. I always like to start off my presentations with what the mission is of Yavapai College. The mission is to provide quality higher learning and cultural resources for the diverse populations of Yavapai County. And if you know our county, we've got some pretty diverse populations, especially in age demographics, as you look at the populations that are moving here, and some of those that unfortunately are moving outward. How do we accomplish this mission? We take our directives, from an administrative standpoint, from the district governing board that has three board ends, and the first one, if I can work this right, is education. So that's our number-one priority in all of its different facets. One of the ways we do that is adult basic education. I heard in one of the proclamations, I think, when it was applied to College Day in the FAFSA, that you have a predominant population in Arizona, not just in this county, that don't have a two-year associate's degree. Adult basic education helps give those adults the background they need to be successful. So in many cases, these are students that didn't even graduate from high school, because the adult basic, or adult basic education is very different than GED, although they can be combined so that somebody can get their GED after going through the adult basic education program. In dual enrollment, that is where we are able to credential a high school instructor to teach college curriculum, so that the students get straight-transcripted college credit. The old model was articulation, where, for instance, at Mingus, we would say, if you take these two classes, they would equate to one of ours. And the issue with that was, a student would graduate from high school, they had to declare that they took an articulated class, and then we'd have to go in the system and get their transcripts and everything like that. The dual enrollment process is much cleaner, and what it does is it helps prepare those students again. My philosophy, and many of the superintendent's philosophies, we've got students graduating from high school that should have a number of college credits under their belt before they even graduate. And the ideal situation, if many of you have probably spoken or met Dr. Penny Hargrove at Mingus, is that there's a possibility of students graduating from high school with a certificate the same time they graduate from high school. So if those students are ready, we don't want to put up barriers for them. Developmental education. Over 60% of the students that we get in the door every year require some sort of remedial education. Okay, that's significant. That means that whether they're high school graduates, or they're adults who stop out for a number of years, what's happening is they come in and they're taking our placement exams, and they're not placing into the 100-level classes, all right? So we've got developmental education, which means that we've got some classes that can help get them to that 100-level course. Another thing we're doing with the high schools as well is testing juniors to see where they are at that point in time. It's not enough that we wait till they graduate from high school and then apply to Yavapai and come in, but we really need to take a look at if they need remedial education a lot sooner than that, so that we can work with the high schools to make sure that those students are actually ready to flow straight into what we have. Transfer education, these are your GEN-ads, AZ Transfer. The statewide system is a SUN system, where we've got classes listed in a catalog that transfer straight to the three universities here in Arizona, depending on the pathway that that student is interested in pursuing as a career. Career and technical education, been a heavy topic for the last couple of years, and will continue to be. We know that there's a shortage of individuals in various workforces, not only here in Yavapai County, but the state of Arizona, the region, and the United States. So that's been a key focus of what we've been doing here specifically in the Verde Valleys, is trying to identify those various programs. This last year, of course, we launched Culinary at the New Sedona Center, which was a $5.6 million renovation to that facility, and to success. I mean, we've got a cohort of J-TED high school students that are attending classes from 7:00 in the morning till 9:45. So it's called kind of their zero period. And interesting enough, I talked to the instructor chef Jen the other day, she's only had one student be late, and that one student was late only once. And realized that last week was fall break for the school districts. Yavapai College doesn't have a fall break, and 100% of those students were there taking classes while we were still in session. So it's, we've got a huge success there. Hospitality, we weren't able to launch this semester. So what we're doing is I've tasked Dr. Barb Walk, my associate dean, to really go out there and look at stronger partnerships with all of the resorts and the businesses here in the Verde Valley, including the Yavapai Apache Nation. As they get ready to open up their new resort, I think the open date is around January 1, we want to look at where we can satisfy local needs as well. And it doesn't have to be just in the credit side, it could be customized training in the non-credit side, just to give them the skills that they need. Continuing education, that's a huge one for us, especially with an adult population here in the Verde Valley, is what other facets of the various things that we offer can we start to put out there, because we've got a lot of people that are what we'd call lifelong learners. The second goal is economic development. Currently, they're in the final steps of hiring a new director for the Regional Economic Development Center. Some of the things that we've been able to provide to the municipalities and to the county are impact and policy analysis, to really give you a snapshot of the industries here, the workforce here. The college itself uses that data really to go through and take a look at what are some of the emerging trends? What do we currently have here within the county that we're not addressing? I think you've heard me tell this story before, but the college had played around with culinary for years, but it wasn't until 2012 that I asked to do a feasibility study, and of course, now it's 2018, we soft-launched that, but we've got a beautiful new facility for the college, for the east side of the county, that we can teach those skills and get that workforce employed. Small Business Development Center. We continue to offer those types of services to people that are doing startups, or those that want to expand their businesses. The other thing we've done, as I mentioned before, is really tried to tie in our academic programs based on the economic analysis data that we have or that we use. And some of those include allied health, business, of course, various career and technical and public safety. And interesting enough, all of those could be listed as career and technical in some form or fashion. And again, culinary and hospitality, adding that as well. Goal three, cultural enrichment. Classes, we're really looking at a blending of the credit and the non-credit now. There were years ago where we had something called enrichment, so if you wanted to take an English 101 class, not that any of you would, you could take it for enrichment, which meant that you didn't take any of the exams, and you didn't do, I think it was at that point, 50% of the assignments. Interesting enough, we did a pilot test this semester, and there were about 30 students in the community that didn't want to take what we'd call a purely academic class for credit, but they were interested in just reviewing the material. So again, we're looking at more and more facets of those various classes and coursework that we could plug in the non-credit to. Of course, OSHA lifelong learning is one of the pillars or staples of what we do, and that really targets that retirement population. That continues to grow, and it continues to grow at a rate that is very similar to our growing demographic in that retirement population here within the county. We expect that, not that that portion of what we do would ever surpass or be prioritized above the academic for transfer or the credit coursework, but we know it's an important facet, and we've got to continue to do things for that population. Art galleries, we've got an art gallery here on the Verde Valley Campus, where we have openings every month showcasing various artists, including students. Libraries account for, our libraries for the college account for 20% of the countywide system. And we have people going into the library at the Verde Valley Campus that don't even take classes there, but they use the library as a resource, and we want to be able to do that. And of course, community events, live music, movie and satellite streaming within M137, and academic symposiums, as well as leveraging some of the other resources within the Verde Valley, such as Mingus's Performing Arts Center and the Sedona Performing Arts Center, to bring large venues to the Verde Valley. I'll end on a couple of notes. One of the things that I don't have up here was the success of College for Kids this last year. We had over 800 registrations and over 480 unduplicated headcount. That could not have been done without the partnerships with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and specifically Steve King, in us talking together about how do we create that articulated pathway from pre-K all the way through, all the way through to a baccalaureate degree? What types of programs can we plug in there? This year, not only did Cottonwood Oak Creek participate, Beaver Creek participated, Camp Verde participated, as well as the nation. So we're looking at expanding that and seeing how we can touch more students to really get them interested and motivated to go to college. In the works, like I mentioned before, revamp of hotel and restaurant management to meet workforce needs and for transfer to NAU. We've been meeting with the director for hotel and restaurant management up there, and we've got a framework for a two-plus-two with junior standing, which means that a student coming to Yavapai College could get the first two years here, and then finish their second two years at NAU. The other neat thing about that is NAU's second two years are almost totally online, so that student could stay here to get their bachelor's degree, and then if they decided to go somewhere else, they could, but they wouldn't have to. And that's an important facet to look at. Other partnerships with the University of Arizona, you're familiar with the Crotchio DK Ranch property. We're working with them right now on an initiative that would have something to do with local grown produce, and supplying various restaurants in the area to do that. So they've got a letter of interest out right now for people who would potentially come in and farm that ground, where we see the connection is not only from the agriculture or the sustainable piece, but also tying in those programs to what we do within the culinary program. We would like to be able to grow all the food, or vegetables at least, that we needed for the culinary program onsite, and then work that into the curriculum as well. The last thing is the Educational Master Plan. We're about two years into the strategic plan for the Verde Valley Campus and the strategic plan for the whole institution. One of the things that is kind of timing out this year is our Educational Master Plan, when we really look at the academic areas and where we're going. I've been tasked to head the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee for the institution, and our first project is this Educational Master Plan. We're going through the process of program review. How do we review programs and identify if they're still sustainable? What metrics do we use to identify programs that we need to start, that we don't yet have? What are we gonna do kind of to meet the current and future challenges facing higher ed in the state of Arizona, especially with funding less than 1% of our budget being state-funded now, and we don't expect that to come up or come back? So a lot of conversations are taking place right now. One of the key things over here is working with Bob Weir in VACT, in helping him develop a strategic plan so that we can be lockstep as we look at program areas and create those pathways. It's real easy for us to do things in isolation, but it doesn't do anybody any good. We can do more by leveraging resources and working together than we can do separately. And with that, I'll open up to any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions from council?
I have just one.
Please.
First, thank you for that presentation. It was good information, and I'm especially excited to hear about the partnership for local produce. That's been something that has been discussed, at least in so much as our local farmers market encourage gardeners and farmers to bring their produce. Earlier in the year, at our strategic retreat, we heard about the apprenticeship program through the Economic Development Center, and I'd wanted to follow up for some additional details about how local businesses could participate in that apprenticeship program. Where could I get more information about that?
What I can do is, as I mentioned, the previous director of the REDC was spearheading that program. She has taken another job in another state, and Vice President Jenkins is in the final stages of hiring a new director for that position. The way that it would work before, and I don't know if it's changed, is that businesses would contact REDC, looking for interns in various areas, and then the REDC or the Regional Economic Development Center would try to pair that business with an intern. I know that there are some internships as well, running through career and technical education, but they're really in specific, very specific areas, per grant. I wouldn't be able to name those right now. The other thing is, in some of our programmatic areas, just for instance, viticulture and analogy, we have a practicum built into those programs. So we encourage students not only to serve those practicum hours within our facility and our fields, but to get some additional experience as well with some of the local businesses. But I can definitely send you contact information for REDC.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. I appreciate you giving the update on your collaborations with Superintendent Weir, with VACT. I think that's great that you guys are working together. That's kind of a missing component for career tech, I think, here in the area. Huge need for construction-related workers. My other question was SBDC, or Small Business Development Center? I know it's strong in Prescott. Are there any thoughts on starting or expanding program out here?
Yeah, so we have a couple of part-time SBDC people over here currently. Part of what Vice President Jenkins is doing is really taking a hard look at what services are being offered and how we're offering those countywide. As I mentioned, we had, we've had quite a bit of lull in there with that REDC director position being out, and the reason I say that is because SBDC reported to REDC, which reported to a previous vice president as well. So Vice President Jenkins is relatively new to the fold, as he's getting a sense of the landscape. I know he's been meeting with various constituents in the municipalities to talk about some of the issues or challenges, so that he can come up with a plan to identify those, and I know that SBDC is on his radar for that.
Okay, great, great. Any other questions? Thanks for coming in tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay, one more presentation. We have the review of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission's 2016-17 year. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, Hezekiah Allen with the Parks and Recreation Department. I've had the pleasure of working with youth commission for over 11 years now, and these folks, I thought I would give more, but in reality, they've given more to me than I'll ever recognize or understand. Today, I've got Adrian Ruben Calense, Leonce, sorry. He's a 10th grader. We've got Sophia Rocha, who's a 12th grader, and Gunner Tillmans, who's a 12th grader, who's gonna run through their 2016-17 accomplishments.
Very good. Thanks to the commissioners for being here. This is really something, again, that came out of our strategic planning retreat, is that we wanted to hear more from our commissions and what they're doing on behalf of the council, so thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here today. My name is Sophia, and I'm gonna be running through a couple of different events that we've had in this past year, such as the haunted house, where we had 96 and a half service hours, along with proceeds of $2,388, and we collected 312 cans of food and donated that to the Rising Hope Food Pantry, and served a population of 688 people. Do you have anything you want to say about that?
The haunted house is one of our bigger events, and we tried it the first time last year. We didn't know if it was gonna go big, and it did. We really enjoyed it. It's a really fun event to put on, and we're doing it again this year, so I'll be seeing you guys then.
Yes, you will.
Another event that we did was the Walking on Main, where we sold chocolate-dipped apples. That was 26 hours that we put into, and we got $145 as proceeds, and served a population of 1,000 people.
And my personal favorite was the Easter egg kind of event. I had a blast, it was wonderful. Had a total attendance of 1,200 people, it was amazing. We helped set up, throwing candy everywhere, which kids found every single piece. I mean, I was going through everything. It was, it was all done. And we had a total of 54 service hours, and expenses were $64.59, and the proceeds were $90. It was a great time. Can't wait for the next year.
All right. We do a bunch of events. One of our other bigger ones is our 4th of July event. You know, we get to set up, set a booth up, we sell water, and it's really fun just to talk to the youth and go around, and it's a really good event for us. But one thing I really like is the, the, sorry, the Angel Tree Project, sorry. It's really fun. We go around, and we get all these presents, and we get to wrap them up, and you don't know who they're going to, but you do know like the age area, and you know, it's really cool to see that this is going to someone, you know, that needs it, and it's just a, you know, it's heartwarming. Anyway, it's, that's one of my favorite events. Sorry. Anyway, and then, sorry for my late arrival. I just got back from a swim meet from Sedona. We took the Heist Cup.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in all, this year, total service hours were 537.5. Total expenses, $5,772.
Total expenses, $5,772.84 with proceeds equalling $5,482.44. So, these young people do a great job of almost pretty much breaking even and they've served 5,061 people. Lastly, but most importantly, this group wouldn't have the success that they've had without a great mentor and that's Kirsten Hastings and the work she does at the youth center. So, are there any questions?
Any questions from council?
No, just a great job.
Congratulations.
I would like to, just while you're here, why don't you give a plug for your haunted house since you are being filmed right now and this is getting out to the public. So, go ahead and try to get some folks wrangled into your haunted house. Can you give us some details?
All right. It's the 27th, 28th, and the 31st.
Do you want us to dim the lights? Would it make it more?
Oh, yeah. Get us spooky in here. Oh, yeah. You know, we're putting a lot of work into it, a lot more than we did last year. So, if you came last year, it's going to be a lot better. It's going to be a lot scarier. It's going to be a lot of fun as well. We're doing a canned proceeds. So, basically if you bring some canned goods, you get a dollar off each canned good. And so, yeah. Come and get scared.
I thought it was pretty scary last year, so I don't know if I can handle it this year. What were the hours that it will be open or what are the hours?
I believe six to nine.
Six to nine on each of those nights?
Six to 10, my bad.
Six to 10, okay.
Is this open to all ages?
It is.
Ten and under accompanied by adult, okay.
Accompanied by adult.
Very good. For their own safety.
Exactly. If anybody wants to accompany me as well.
Very good. Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, next up we have call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to address the council for an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. We'll close the floor to the public and move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 3, 2017.
I had some minor changes.
Sure.
On page 10 of the minutes, the fifth paragraph down, it reads Council Allen stated, should read Council Member Allen stated. And then on page 11, also fifth paragraph down, it reads Councilmember Alt House. And I believe if memory serves, that was Councilmember Allen.
What does it say after that?
Councilmember Alt House was pointing to the city manager.
No, I was. That was me.
Okay. Well, I guess I was looking this way and I just saw Councilmember Allen, so then strike the second correction.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections from council? So, we had a motion. I'll go ahead and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. It was the vice mayor that made the motion and mayor seconded. Okay, unfinished business. Item one is professional services agreement with Atkins North America, Inc. to conduct a detailed floodplain study of the Old Town and Del Monte Wash areas. Hello.
Hello. Mayor and Council. Robert Winnicky, City Engineer. I have tonight with us women from the county. She's a district engineer with flood control, as well as Linda Potter with Atkins. She's the design consultant. We're looking to select to do this project. October 3, we came to you and asked you to go ahead and table this for a future meeting so that way we can get some questions answered and some additional information. In your agenda packets, you have a series of about 13 or 16 questions, or actually there's 18, I believe it is, that we went through. And we're raised by different consultants. We got answers to, brought those to you guys, as well as looked into some additional information about there being flooding in Old Town in the past. We found some information that says, yes, there's been some flooding in Old Town, which we're all kind of hopefully aware. But we have some pictures here. Give me a second. Pull this up. So, these are some newspaper recordings from 1964, flood that occurred here in Old Town. The bottom left corner, there is actually FEMA, the bridge there on FEMA, between 2nd and 3rd or 2nd and 4th. You can see some pretty good water going through there. Some additional pictures on the next page. The, there's actually some water there at Pennell and Main Street. So, we know that this area has had flooding in the past. I think this report, this newspaper article actually goes and indicates that there was water at 4th Street and Main as well, so where the old hospital used to be. So, we know flooding is an issue. Our existing floodplain map shows that. There were some concerns that came up when we originally came up with the proposal to have Atkins do the work. And they felt that, the community felt that there weren't, there were enough information wasn't put into the previous study. And what was found out with a technical data notebook that Atkins prepared is when they did the study for Del Monte Wash and Silver Springs Wash, a incorrect piece of the scope from a different project got included in that, which showed that they paid $136,000 for that study. Well, that work was actually $30,000. So, I think that brought up a lot of the confusion in the first place, thinking if you spend this much money and you've got this type of product, this may not be beneficial for us to continue down that road. So, that did come up throughout the deal. So, we got these responses back from the consultant, talked with the county, talked with different engineers in the community to try and get everything satisfied and see if we can get to a consensus. And I believe we have. We've gone through and reworked things with Atkins in the scope. We have tried to clarify that to give a better indication as to what we're going to survey, to get additional information, to get a better study than we have today. And if I go to that on my document, we have it broken down into two costs. One is for a base fee of $129,229. That would be to go ahead and basically study from the bridge here at Main Street by Lions Park all the way through the confluence of the river. And that includes the survey and all the other pieces. The only thing that got taken out of that was the $8,250 to go ahead and submit that documentation to FEMA for approval. So, we're going to still pay for that out of the grant, but instead of having Atkins write the check, the cities can go ahead and write the check. So, I asked Atkins to go ahead and extend, give us a price to extend that study from the Wash or from the bridge here at Lions Park all the way up to 89A so we can have a better understanding as to what the flood characteristics are in that part of the channel as well. To go ahead and do that, they've come back with a price of about $5,800, $5,900 to go ahead and do. It's subtask 4.4 and 5.4 on the second page of the fee document that we have. It's the last page for this agenda item. That would bring our total to, I believe it's $137,000 plus another $8,000. So, we're looking at $144,000 overall, including the loaner fees. We have $150,000 budgeted with a grant from Flood Control District to go and do the study. And I'm asking you to consider awarding the contract to Atkins and to move forward with that work so we can get this moving forward.
Very good. Any questions from council for staff at this time?
Before we approve it or are we going to go on further?
I'll just say a few words, but I didn't know if there was any questions from council. I just want to say thanks for tabling the item and taking a step back and getting all these questions answered. And I met, well, I didn't meet in person, but we talked on the phone. And it certainly sways a lot of my concerns and hopefully the concerns of some of the local engineers who had raised concerns. So, thank you for getting these questions answered. And I think we all know what an impact the new flood map has had in Old Town.
Yeah, unfortunately it's been fairly negative, especially on development. However, I would like to point out one thing that did happen. Originally, the tributaries that were studied, Silver Springs and Del Monte Wash, they were done by FEMA. And FEMA took an ultra-conservative approach. So, the study that Atkins did to get them to be in approximate A-zone actually reduced the footprint of the floodplain a little bit. Originally, the FEMA map showed going all the way to Cactus Street. So, that would have put all these buildings in the floodplain as well. By the work that Atkins did, they actually constricted it a bit and refined it so that it was basically the east side of Main Street up to the river. So, that study did help a little bit, but this one will help a lot more.
Great.
I just wanted to say thank you to Morgan as well. I was approached, and I'm sure some other council members were approached, with concerned local business owners. And I'm sure you got pretty hammered on that, some of that being the money that you explained. And there were other concerns that I was approached on and Morgan was able to address them one by one. And I'm using my cellphone because my laptop just died. I thought it was plugged in and it wasn't. I'm not surfing the net, folks. But I really appreciate that you took the time and Morgan especially, because we had to flip back and forth as to when I could actually speak with him. Because of one individual that came to me, that he took the time to ease my fears and give me all the facts and let me know how that survey will really benefit the city. No, we're not going to be spending more money for services that we really should spend. You know, we should get more from it. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
All right. Counsel? Did I hear a motion?
Get back. I'll make a motion. I have to find it. Okay, I move to award the contract to Atkins North American Incorporated to conduct a detailed study of the approximate A-zone encompassing Old Town, Cottonwood, the surrounding neighborhoods and Del Monte Wash.
May I ask you to include the piece that goes from Lions Park up to 89A on the?
Including the piece that goes from Lions Park to State Writing in 98.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you. Thanks for being here, both of you. Okay, unfinished business is complete. We move on to the consent agenda and we have three items on the consent agenda tonight. Item one is acquisition of control liquor license. Application submitted by Robert C. Sprouse, agent for Giant Store Number 16 located at 999 South Main Street. Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant Number 2018-405-D-012 for DUI Task Force Overtime. Item three is Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant Contract Number 2018-PTS-017 for selective traffic enforcement patrol. Are there any items council would like to pull from the consent agenda? Any items the public would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as drafted.
Okay. Good motion from Councilmember Henry and seconded by Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Okay, we move on then to new business. Item one is Resolution Number 2917, appointing Catherine Turney, a member to the city's Historic Preservation Commission and establishing her term of office. Hello, good evening.
As you know, at the last meeting, we held interviews for the one open partial term for the Historic Preservation Commission expiring March 22, 2020. The top scorer of that interview process and the entire applicant process in general was Catherine Turney. She both meets the minimum qualifications of this particular seat and also is an archaeologist, which fits into this commission as well, just not necessarily a minimum requirement of this particular seat. So, going forward, that would be a benefit for us as well. We recommend then, since she is the top-scorer applicant, that you appoint her to this seat in the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, very good. Any discussion, counsel? We had them here last time to interview. They both interviewed extremely well.
Both very qualified candidates.
Yep.
I'll make the motion if you're ready.
Please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2917, appointing Catherine Turney a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Alt House, second by Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Motion passes and City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2917.
Resolution Number 2917, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Catherine Turney a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, next up is participant agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office for certified local government historic preservation matching grant to conduct a historic property inventory update for Cottonwood. Mr. Scully, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Charlie Scully. I'm with the Community Development Department. Start with a little background. Way long time ago, in 1864, over in Prescott, they had the first territorial legislature session. Log cabin and they complained about not being finished because it was too cold and the wind was blowing through the cabin. One of the first things they did in the first session of the territorial legislature, about a month into it, was put some money up for and supported what became the Arizona Historical Society, which is still going strong. It's been going on for over 150 years. But it was something they thought of and they discussed not just keeping minutes of meetings, but really wanting to know the history of Arizona. But also, they knew they were doing something historic and they wanted to collect correspondence and reports and artifacts and they wanted to build up information on history. And this really goes back to the beginning. People are interested in where they live, who lived there first and how people lived before they got there. Another thing that was interesting, Arizona has the third lowest percentage of people born, residents born in the state. Only Nevada and Florida have a low present percentage. It's about two out of three residents of Arizona were born in another state or another country. Still, history is something that's important throughout the state, archaeological history. Every town's got a historical society. It's just something that's of interest to people strongly. In 1980, the Congress adopted amendments to the National Historic Preservation Act, which created a program where the local jurisdictions like Cotton would have an official relationship with the state agency, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. It's part of Arizona State Parks. And then a relationship onto the federal program, which is the National Parks Service program. And they called it the Certified Local Government Program and the city, for the work of the Historic Preservation Commission, became certified in this program in 2014. And there's a number of benefits. Access to technical resources and access to some funding programs. Just being part of this program that uses a common language between the cities. There's 30 cities total in Arizona that are part of the CLG program. This, what the benefit being that on occasion they have grant money available. And this particular grant had a pool of $80,000 and it was, 30 cities would be eligible. We didn't get the application form or notice at the beginning of June and we immediately noticed that it was not really advantageous with the budget cycle for funding matching grants. But there was a lot going on in the federal government in the first part of the year and so they delayed this. We thought we'd put in and see if we could compete for the funding and of course they gave it to us. They awarded us $12,000 with a 60-40 match. That's part of the federal requirement. There's matching to get more mileage out of it. So, it's $8,000 match. Would've been nice if we could have started this nine months ago, not in the cycle, but it was what was available. One of the things that the grant would be for, Historic Resource Survey, which is something that was done in 1985 and 1986 was the last citywide historic survey of properties. There were 89 properties identified and for interested There were eighty-nine properties identified, and, uh, if you're interested in what history, historic is, it's at least fifty years old, meets some qualifications for significance, something happened there, it's a good example of, uh, architecture. Or, and as, uh, the third part is, uh, that it has integrity. It's essentially in the same condition it was at the historic period, or most of it. There was eighty-nine properties identified, uh, thirty years ago, uh, but now with all the properties that have been developed, and since that was from nineteen-thirty-five, now we're looking at historic before nineteen-sixty-eight. Sounds kind of crazy, but, uh, uh, I think there's probably close to six hundred properties now in Cottonwood that would qualify by the age. And with the survey, uh, under the program, it provides additional grants under, has to have, uh, professional, qualified professionals lead the survey and qua, and certify it and do it, so, uh, the grant money would be to get this qualified professional to lead the program, which is part of getting additional grant money afterwards for other things. Um, and it, it's not going to get the whole city, it's going to get, we'll, we'll find out, but it would be a portion. So, say in the Old Town area, there's five hundred address properties, there are four hundred that meet the age criteria. I don't know if they're significant, but maybe three hundred or more. And that's just, it became the historic district. Uh, that's just a portion of commercial property through Main Street. That's why that, that's the source of when you hear from bridge to bridge and documenting that. That came out of that historic survey in nineteen-ninety-nine. So, uh, I think, you know, because there's so many potential resources, it's something that's benefits the property owner and the public to just know what's there, what the properties are, uh, what the history was. It comes out in a report, and it's done property by property, gets detailed information. And that's the basic program. We also have, we've got, uh, Chris Vernoski, who's the Vice Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and, uh, Michael Matthews, who's the newest member of the Historic Preservation Commission, is also here. I'm not sure, I think Chris wants to speak as well.
Okay. Can you just go into a little bit of, um, just a little bit of information about why in nineteen-eighty-five it was important to do Historic Resources Survey, and why this would be important now for the council to consider? What are the benefits?
Benefits are documenting your properties, both commercial and residential, for people to know their history, know their, who lived here, what their identities, even if they're just moved here recently. It, it helps to create an understanding what's, what the community's, how it was formed, how people lived, what they were doing. I think there's a kind of, uh, that part, but it's, uh, known to have economic development benefits. Uh, people restore older houses, but there's a value, there's a premium to well-maintained older buildings.
Now, we'll-
A lot of documentation on that.
With this survey, will we be eligible, uh, for other grants through our CLG membership and through State Historic Preservation Office?
If the community decides to go the next step and has a majority of properties that are his, historic and valuable in that way, uh, and wanted to go through the historic district designation process with the National His, uh, National Register of Historic Places that, uh, identifies those buildings a, as a district. Uh, there's state tax, uh, waiver, there's a major reduction on state property tax for owner-occupied buildings in historic districts, uh, and there's a twenty percent of tax credit program for commercial renovations. So there's some, some pretty good financial incentives.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Directly, but other than just, I've talked to a, a realtor who would tell you that a well-maintained historic building is going to be part of the s, sales pitch right at the beginning.
And I just, uh, you know, of course, you know, I'm the Chair, the Commissioner, everything, but I can say this has been on our, on our list from day one as part of our, our strategic goals, is to get this survey, uh, complete. And Charlie's not one to brag about himself, but he has worked extremely hard to, on his own, survey a lot of Cottonwood. And we have commissioners that have served, like Linda Farley in the past, who really have made it her life's work to document the age and the, the, um, it just, as much as she can get, and as much as you can get on that home, and we have, uh, spreadsheets that we have a lot of information on. But the missing component really is having that professional come on board and, uh, get this document complete. But it has been on our list for a long time. As well as, I think, uh, an underutilized, um, driver for tourism, and an underutilized source of pride for our community. So I'm going to end my sales pitch there.
I have a question.
Please.
Just real quick, and I know you touched on it, that you can't, you don't know exactly what area is going to be surveyed, or how much of Cottonwood. Can you give us a general idea? Is it going to be all of Old Town? And if by Old Town, do you mean down to Mingus Avenue or not? Or kind of what does that encompass?
I think, well, I think what the Commission members have talked about is that with this, if we got twenty thousand dollars total, and then also had volunteer work and got some work done, this would be kind of phase one. This would be getting the foot in the door and get the process going, because there'd be some expectations that maybe over several years to do the whole city.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, working with the State Historic Preservation Office and the staff there, and they've said that it's really hard to tell until they get on the ground with the, with the professionals, whether you want to do a lighter survey for more properties, or go deeper into the history and do the deeper research in the archives and the museum, uh, which would be fewer.
Okay, thank you.
I think the hope is that, and, and we've really got a lot of the, the reconnaissance survey, I think is what we would call it, complete for, we've got a professional, um, surveyor to come in, and a lot of the groundwork's really been complete, so I hope that that would be, uh, give us bigger bang for our buck.
We've looked at everywhere in the city limits, it's just not the newest subdivisions, and came up with twenty-five hundred properties that, we got data and about eighty-five pages of tiny spreadsheet with twenty-five hundred properties.
Yeah.
You know, the age, and they're scattered all over. There's buildings from the nineteen-tens and twenties over by the Cottonwood ditch, up by the airport. Just, it's really kind of diverse all through, but the biggest concentration is where the people lived originally, which is Old, uh, what we call Old Town. The, the area around Main and Mingus had a lot of earlier buildings that seemed to, didn't survive, but there's great examples, there's just not as dense, the dense of collection. There's great examples over on, on the curve, but, uh, not as dense. So if you were to start with someplace that might qualify for a district, it would be Old Town.
So if you've got a home made out of ammo boxes, it probably would qualify.
Oh, absolutely.
My house is made out of ammo boxes.
We, we need to talk.
I have a question.
Please.
The packet talks about using, uh, eight thousand dollars matching fund from council contingency, and then it says there's approximately eight thousand remaining in council contingency. So is the eight thousand remaining after this eight thousand is removed, so do we have sixteen thousand currently? Or we only have eight thousand and this depletes the contingency fund?
Yeah, there's about eight thousand in it, and this would deplete it.
That's a concern for, for me.
Sure.
That it depletes our contingency fund, and we're not, you know, we're not, it, the other things can come up, so that-
I understand. It's early in the year to be-
It's very early in the year to be depleting our contingency fund.
Any other questions from council for staff? We have, uh, the Vice Chair Vernoski here from the Commission. Would you care to come up? Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, you twisted my arm, so I have to- First of all, I'd like to thank Charlie. I know he's retiring soon, and, um, in work for him, I don't think this Preservation Commission would be anywhere. I mean, he's really done an outstanding job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think the Comish, I've only been on the Commission for three years, and, um, I think it's been around for seven, and there's been thousands of hours of, um, time by the Commissioners, both in meetings and, um, doing research. And like Tim said, a lot of the research has been done on a lot of the homes in Old Town, and, and Linda is, has been just a dream person for our Commission. She's no longer on it, but she's still doing the work. And that's going to help stretch these grant dollars a long way. If, if we had to start from scratch, and the people had to do the work that, um, she has already done, you know, they might get the twenty thousand dollars, um, I don't know, twenty houses. I mean, it just takes a lot of effort. But as far as being on the Commission, we really can't do anything until we get these surveys done. And, and so, um, you know, we've been at it for seven years, and we're, we're at a dead end. And, you know, our job is to, you know, help in these research things, but also to, um, educate the people in town about what the advantages are to get these surveys done and to get these designations, um, for them. Uh, the property tax and, uh, the, uh, tax credits are all part of that. And then, um, once we have this information, if, if properties are coming, if they, people are going to do building projects on their property, then we have a platform to work from. Right now, we have no platform. So what happens is, if somebody brings a project in to us to review, which they have, and we have no platform to work from, we can't really make any comments or decisions on it. And so that's kind of where we are on the Commission right now. And we would really like some help from you all to, um, get us going in the proper direction, and, um, it'd be great.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. And one of our primary goals, and I say it again and again on, at the Commission, is economic development. And there's a lot of ways that we've advanced our opportunities for economic development in Cottonwood, and this again is, is a missing component to that, because like Mr. Vernoski said, these are, um, you know, once the survey's complete, then we've got, uh, opportunities we can showcase to the residents of how they can apply for tax credits and all these other opportunities. And again, the, 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 the tourism, um, possibilities are immense. There's a lot of people now that are traveling, uh, to areas just to tour their history, and people don't realize the immense, uh, and very rich history that we have here in Cottonwood. Um, and all we have to do is, is convince them on their way to Jerome from Sedona to stop here. And, and we have it all right in front of us, really low-hanging fruit, honestly, but this survey is that missing link. And the other thing too is along economic development, you know, this Commission's worked really hard through the historic home and building tour, um, to provide a revenue stream, uh, that in no way benefits the Commission. It's all volunteer-led, um, and this revenue stream goes toward, um, uh, landmark properties, begin to encourage people to landmark their home. Um, it's putting money back in the local economy. Uh, the Commission, unlike other Commissions, has never asked for any money, uh, from the Council. We've operated on a zero-dollar budget for seven years now, unlike other Commissions, uh, including the Youth Commission that was in earlier, you know? So I, I know the timing is terrible, uh, because we've already approved the budget, um, but again, on a seventy-two million dollar budget, I can't imagine that there's not eight thousand dollars somewhere that we could stir up. And I'm looking forward, uh, to having Mr. Rodriguez come up and tell us where that money might come from.
Mayor and counsel, what money are you talking, eight thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is not uncommon. Uh, as, you know, we try to work through every year, try to make sure we pick up every single grant possibility, and every year we seem to miss certain ones. I'm just glad this isn't a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, we have to come up with eighty thousand, and that's the way I look at it. Eight thousand dollars is something that we, we'll go ahead and manage. Uh, already, we're looking at how we're going to pay for, uh, the VVTV, uh, contract, and we've already got that already set up, um, and we'll have some extra that'll probably more than likely cover this amount too. So we're, we're, I think we're good to go.
Okay. I did, just so councils are aware, I did go to Clemensaw Heritage Museum to ask if there was any money they had available to help assist this, because this is going to help them out also in the work that they do for the community.
I'm sorry?
The Clemensaw Heritage Museum.
Oh, thank you, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, and they, they, uh, they did submit a letter of, 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 of support, but they weren't able to come up with any cash. But they would be, uh, a resource for us and for the person, the professional person who's going to put the survey together to provide information, so they'd still be willing to help out in that capacity.
Thank you, Mayor.
Rudy, I'm sorry. You thought you were going to sit down. I, I do have to piggyback a little bit on, um, Councilmember Alt House's concern in that this is the rest of the city council's, um, contingency budget? Is that where the majority of this is going to come from?
This is where all of it's going to come from. Okay. You, you know, you have to understand that this is, this is, a budget is a plan, a picture in time.
Yep.
That gets put together six months before the year even starts. Uh, traditionally, we, we're, we're fairly conservative, so we try to make sure that we have some buffers here and there. We have undesignedated reserves plugged in here, we have two different contingency levels, and we also have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar in a grants budget that we have just in case we were to get that two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that has no matching funds. But, uh, we do have a budget allocation. All we have to do is make sure that when we go through our budget, our budgeting process, we make sure that we move those allocations from one area to another to make sure they're covered. Uh, like I said, an eight-thousand-dollar, uh, amount is not a very large amount, especially when it's, it's a needed project such as this.
So now I have a follow-up question. So another, something else comes to us, uh, that now the, um, contingency fund is at zero dollars. Something else comes to us. Are we just dead in the water, or there's still a way you can move money around?
No. There, there, there's ways to move money, call, that's why if you, if you look at our budget carefully, it has ways that we can go ahead and do budgetary adjustments, and they happen all throughout the year. We just compile them all, and then we come and start the budget process in November, December, thereabouts. Uh, then we go ahead and start making the budgetary adjustments, and they'll come to council. You'll see budgetary adjustments for the current fiscal year, uh, when we start doing, preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. If something were to come up that we needed a few thousand dollars, we, we would figure out a way to come up with it.
Okay.
Through budgetary-
Because to me, when the savings account's at zero, the savings account's at zero, and there's nowhere to get the money from, so.
You have to understand that we, again, this is a picture in time, and we can always go back and see where we can come up with more money. Not necessarily that do we, do we go out, not always that we go out and go to hit department heads. If our sales tax or other fees are doing well, we actually are, we, we, like I said, we're very conservative as far as how we do our projections. And we always make sure that we have some allocation set aside for things such as this.
Did I hear you say that we budgeted five-hundred-thousand dollars for grant opportunities?
Every, every year, uh, as long as I've been here, we've always allocated five-hundred-thousand dollars for grant opportunities. Now, that doesn't mean that it's available to spend, it just means that if we were to get a sizable grant, we have the allocation. Now, if there's a matching portion, like I said earlier, I'm glad it's not a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant with an eighty-thousand-dollar allocation.
Right.
Because that would be a little bit more difficult to cover, but this is relatively small, and, and it's not a, something that would be opposing kind of hardship for us.
Could, could we not then pull the eight-thousand-dollar match from that fund?
No. No, but, no, because that's, that's in case there, that's-
It's spending authority.
It's spending authority. That doesn't mean that there's money available, it just means that there's spending authority. In Arizona, if you don't have the spending authority, you can't use it. In this particular case, it's relatively small, so all we're going to do is shift the spending authority within the general fund to, to, to cover it. If we were to get a very sizable grant that we don't have the spending authority in the general fund, then we could go ahead and look at transferring that, that authority over. But this is a relatively small amount, and we can absorb it within the general fund. There's no use in going out and going after an amount that's not, that's not in a sense physically there.
I just, and I understand Councilmember Alt House's concern, it concerns me too. We're early in the year, and we're blowing through our contingency, that's concerning. So it'd be nice if we could pull the money from another, uh, source that we've already budgeted for that then would allow us, you know, to still maintain our-
But that's, that's, that's not cash, that is just budget authority.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's not necessarily five-hundred-thousand dollars sitting out there to be spent, it's just authority in case we were to get some money available to-
Okay. All right. Any other questions from Council?
No, I appreciate that, Rudy. The spending authority is what I was looking for. I understand that we have spending authority that if we were to get a grant for, let's say, a $500,000 grant, if we don't put that in our budget, it doesn't matter that we're getting free money, we don't get to spend it. So I understand what that meant and I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for your time. Any other questions then? No. Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the participant agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office for the 2017 Certified Local Government Historic Preservation Passed Through Grant. Okay, Mayor made the motion and Vice Mayor seconded it. Should we do a roll call vote? That'd be better?
Sure.
Uh, City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Althouse?
No.
Councilmember Henry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Howdige?
Aye.
Mayor Alinsky?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is adopting a city logo use policy.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Hesekiah Allen with Parks Recreation Department, myself and Jeff Cook with the procurement department are going to be making this presentation. This all started when we were approached by Mr. Jackson, who just purchased Zoomer's Bike Shop, and asked if he could start using the city's logo on some of his merchandise. After taking it up the flagpole, the city manager suggests that we start looking into a logo policy to protect the city's logo and brand. I think it's important to first determine, understand what a brand is. It tends to be that phrase that everybody throws out willy-nilly. But simply, a brand is what people believe about you. And that's why it is really important to ensure that like-kindness, the brand, the color, the logo, the look of it is used consistently. Branding should be, both proceed and underline any marketing effort. Branding is not a push but pull. Branding is the expression of the essential truth or value of an organization, product or service. It is communication of characteristics, values, and attributes that clarify what this particular brand is and is not. It's also important to note that if you don't have a brand, you do. You always have a belief of how people feel about you. Coca-Cola, Harley-Davidson, some of the larger brands, there's two processes that happen in your mind. There's your cognitive process and your subconscious. When you become intimate with a brand, it becomes a subconscious thought. Marketing, on the other hand, is selling the right product to the right customer at the right time, at the right price, and using convenient channel for that customer. Marketing is your message. Put simply, there is a thought of the cognitive marketing strategies where you could throw enough impressions out there, people will subconsciously purchase your product. Now, it's changing more so to where you put the right thing out there at the right time, at the right price, and then you roll the dice. When you look at sort of the brand and what our brand represents, it's really cutting-edge. Jeff and I looked at a lot of cities. And the fact that it says the heart of Arizona is wine country, that it's tourism-based, it's meant to drive traffic, symbolizes a lot. And how you compare it as economic development versus tourism. Tourism has three categories: service facilities, linger-longer, which are malls, pedestrian area, museums, zoos, boardwalks, and then magnets: sports events, festivals, theme parks, destination resorts, water parks. Our wine industry is a magnet. It draws people to this area, which is another reason we have to make sure that our brand represents what we want it to do. So I had the pleasure to attend a recent wine consortium meeting to talk about walking on Main. And NAU was there to represent or present their economic impact study. Fast fact: total economic output for the state of Arizona and the wine industry, $56.2 million, 640 jobs, 3.6 million in state and local taxes, and 57% day trippers, 43% overnight stayers. You see our logo, you understand what it means, and they come here. And talking to the folks from Northern Arizona University, about 60% to 70% of those figures are from the Verde Valley. We have the hotel rooms, we have the retail shops, we have the destinations. When it comes to our logo, our current investment, Havas Design, and this is approximate number, it's $13,000. That was signed January 20th, 2014. About in kind of $15,000 went into that process. And then the implementation phase, so we've spent about $20,000 per year for the past four years, CEDC funds, chamber funds, to, to date, almost $80,000 in just advertising. And we start letting other agencies, other organizations use this logo without proper control, that money is wasted. Jeff's going to come up and explain the policy research and the breakdown of how we got to where we're at.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Contract Purchasing Manager, Jeff Cook. So all of that that Hesekiah has alluded to, he came to me with those same concerns and seeing that we didn't have any type of policy or avenue to allow a proper use of our logo and our brand and wanting to protect that asset and that investment, we do what we often do and started hunting and borrowing from others. There's a listing of a few cities we researched and reviewed that had very similar policies to what's included in the packet that we're presenting before you. And really, I'm just going to read that right there. The main purpose is to establish a policy and procedure regarding the use of the City of Cottonwood logo. The logo is considered a symbol of the authority and jurisdiction of the city and as such is a valuable asset to the city and its citizens. The intent of this policy is to ensure that only appropriate and advantageous uses of the city's logo are conducted. And as I said, many of these were very similar. Typically, if there was a variance, it was in the fee structure or the cost. As and I went round and round on, you know, how do you put a value on our logo? It's not the Nike swoosh. It's, you know, at this point in time, anyway. So what we had found was, and staff basically agreed that a one-time application fee of about $50 would at least cover staff costs in vetting the applications that are submitted. And that's pretty much where we stand right now. I don't know. You have anything else to add or any questions?
So walk the Council through this, then. What would happen when a business comes in and wants to use the city logo?
So we've got the application. That was included in the packet there. And we tried to keep it relatively brief, but still gather enough information about the proposed use. Hesekiah, I felt that it does have marketing value and we do want to get the logo out there. I mean, it's, the city has some value in getting that out there. We don't want to deter folks from using it. So we created this application form to answer if they're for-profit entity or not-for-profit entity, what events, products, or advertising materials that they're going to use it for, if they have start and end dates in mind, promotional materials, and anything that they really want to include on their proposed use. Nonprofits have the option to request a waiver of the fee. This policy would kind of grant the city manager authority to either approve, deny, or ask for more information from the applicants. And then there's also an appeal process attached to this so that if somebody was denied and thought wrongfully so, they could come before Council. And ultimately, it would be your final decision whether or not to approve or deny the application.
So they could use, you know, the logo, you would give it to them in an electronic file? They could use it both in print and electronically, through social media and websites and-
Yeah, and I think we'd probably make it clear to them that we want them to use the file that we provide to them and not alter that so it's represented in a nice, clean, clear representation as we do.
Okay. Questions?
I do have a question. In the agreement, it says all non-city usage of the logo, including nonprofit usage, requires city authorization. So can you give me, give me some examples of how this would be used? If somebody print up a T-shirt with a great big logo on it and they're allowed to sell that? Or kind of give me an example of how that would be authorized?
Does he want to handle that one better than-
So like Jeff alluded to, Councilwoman Allen, if an individual or a business or entrepreneur came to the city and said, "Hey, I would like to start using the city's logo on some retail merchandise," they'd get the application from city manager's office, fill it out, turn it back to the city manager, and he would review the application and get him authorized, the applicant, or not authorize the applicant based on the criteria that's outlined in this logo policy. Logo policy is designed as really to protect the city's logo and like-kindness and how it's being used and purported.
On that same note, do other cities allow commercial businesses to use their logo? I mean, to me, it feels as though we're endorsing these businesses.
Some of them do and they would charge a fee. And I'm not, we were trying to figure out how that would work specifically for us. They charge fees to those for-profit organizations based on a percentage of the sales that they make tied to that city logo. So if they have merchandise, whether it's T-shirts, coffee mugs, whatever, what have you, some of the other fee structures were kind of tied to the percentage of sales. We thought that might be kind of cumbersome to track and report back and forth with the business, which is why we chose just a one-time application fee.
Also on that is that, you know, the wine industry, if they have our logo on the glass in every tasting, they're going to be giving a percentage back to the city. So again, we thought that would be cumbersome.
But how does that work, then, if we have one with the logo and everybody else without it? Doesn't it look as though the city prefers or endorses that particular tasting room?
I guess that may. I don't know that that's the goal or the purpose of our policy. I think that, just in, from my thoughts, that if the use of the logo was going to be consistent with the vision and brand of the city, that we'd most likely approve all of those.
I just have a concern where the city is spending so, or has invested so much money into the logo and the brand. And we have commercial enterprises, then, who are basically profiting. I support our local businesses and I support them being able to profit off of it. But it just seems as though that $50 one-time fee may not accurately capture that profit and then the expense to us.
I think we had talked, you know, we're kind of, this is brand new to us as well. So starting with a $50 one-time fee, if we start to believe our Council feels that there's a higher value or market value on our brand, we could always look at readjusting that fee, I think. I think we're just kind of what we felt was the starting point, at least, anyway, to kind of get the ball rolling and have something in place so staff has direction on where to go when we're approached.
We have people come in the chamber all the time and we've got hats and caps and stuff that have Arizona on it and Grand Canyon and all that. And we're getting lots of comments about people that want to have Cottonwood on it. So the chamber could apply for that and be able to get caps made locally with the brand on it, right?
So, yeah, and Council, it's also important to understand that the logo right now is trademarked through the state. And yes, the chamber could apply to have a use of the logo and then the city would apply that digitally.
Mayor, Council members, I think this was originally established to deal with the bike shop. And as I understand, what they're looking at is some type of a jersey, bicycle jersey, with the city's logo on it that somebody who is from Cottonwood or has visited Cottonwood is excited about the logo and what goes on here. And so the intent here is really to get the logo out there. It's not necessarily to indicate that the city supports or endorses one business over another. It's more of a decoration and, again, marketing the logo. And I don't, I agree that if this really does kind of take off and get to be something that, you know, is kind of popular and people are selling a lot of them, we may want to go back and revisit the fee schedule on this because, again, we have developed this, we have paid for it, and we should receive some compensation in return. I think the initial fee, again, was just, let's get this going. Let's see what the interest is. And if we need to adjust the fee, we can adjust the fee down the road.
What could happen is that we could authorize them to use this logo for a certain period and then if they want to use it more, they can reapply and we can have a renewal fee. That gives you a chance to adjust your fees without a lot of problem, I think.
And that's probably a good idea because I don't think you want to give them a blanket approval that lasts forever.
We could attach some type of term to that approval, whether it's a year or whatever.
I think you, you're asking the application for some pretty specific information about how it will be used. So I think a term would be good, too.
I also think it might be good to make it clear that we still reserve the right to revoke their permission to use it if they violate or are using it in a manner that is not, you know, if they change their use as on the application, maybe.
I think it's a very well-thought-out policy, not something I would have ever considered necessarily. It's interesting, but I am a little hung up on the fee, however, because I feel like, you know, I want to see how this kind of takes off. But I'm encouraged that there are local businesses that want to use the logo. And I think it's a, to me, it's a, they want to be partners in economic development. And I think they see that this is a way to, you know, promote our community and promote the city of Cottonwood. I don't, I don't want there to be any hindrance to that partnership necessarily. So it's not a big fee at all. I'm not hung up on $50, but I don't want them to feel like we're also trying to profit from their use of the partnership, I guess. Does that make sense?
They're profiting off of us.
Well, are they, though? I don't think people are going to buy the, and I see your point, but I don't-
Buy the T-shirt in a heartbeat.
I would, too. It sounds like cute.
Yeah. You would, just because it has a city Cottonwood logo on it?
Absolutely.
You bet.
A little jersey. And I think the $50 was really to cover staff costs. We're not trying to profit. We're just trying to stay even.
I understand. It's only $50, but I just didn't want to have any, you know, animosity between the business community. Like, here's a great logo. I want you all to invest in it and also pay for it if you want to use it. But I understand.
And I also really appreciate the initiative that this, that was shown by staff in coming up with this policy and the application. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just real quickly, I was looking online real quick to see what other communities did. Came up with a couple that do what we're doing, have a similar application process. They have a start and end date of use of the logo. That might be something to add to it. Just came across that. And then, you know, it specifies what promotional materials are going to be used. But I like the start and end date because that gives us just a little, little bit more control of what's going on with that.
Okay.
I believe we do have a start and end date on item three in our application, which is probably the-
I did neither.
And I think what we want to do is deter people from putting ongoing. And that's what I'm hearing right now. We clearly want them to define. So not knowing what Council's direction would be, I think we left it as an open-ended start and end date. And we can kind of take those as they come.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, what I'd suggest, hearing the conversation and having chatted with staff a little bit about this as they developed it, if, since we're only charging the $50 application fee and there's not royalties or license fees attached to the ongoing use, we can make in the application, when the applicant signs on, that they are agreeing to abide by the city's policy as it may be amended from time to time. And then the city and Council can revisit this as we see how it goes.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Then do you, Council, want to have them come back with a revised- Okay. Then do you, council, wanna have them, uh, come back with a revised, um, policy or do you want us just to?
It'd be nice to hear what you came up with, what it looks like.
Okay.
I mean, we've already discussed it here, so we might as well see the end result.
Okay. Will that in any way, uh, hold up Mr. Jackson and his plans? We're, we're just discussing if we wanna, you guys can go ahead and receive the input and then bring it back, the revised policy back to us for approval. Is that going to be holding up Mr. Jackson or?
I think that would be fine from my understanding. He's in the middle of construction anyways.
Kinda looks like it. Okay, then I think that's the direction from council. Very good, thank you.
You know, and Mayor, council members, it's not unusual for, um, cities who, who do this to actually have kind of their own products, uh, city store, which, uh, we may wanna look at as well. I mean, city employees would probably be interested in, again, there is tourist interest as well, so maybe something we look at.
I like it.
Okay, next up and last on the agenda is, um, for discussion is appointment of alternate council representatives to the personnel board and the Verde Valley homeless coalition. So this comes from me. The personnel board, um, who we appointed was Vice Mayor Ruben Horegi to serve on that and he's indicated he's unable to attend, so the alternate, um, uh, was, uh, Councilmember Henry, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so I just wanted to make sure that we, um, you know, we're clear that we still have another alternate who, who wants to, that can't attend that in your inability to attend. I think I wanna ask you too, are you willing to be the, the, uh, the appointed representative to that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there another council member who would like to be the alternate?
When are the meetings held? It just says once a week, usually thirty to nine, but it doesn't say what day of the week.
It's not that often?
No, I thought it was once a month, um, on a certain Wednesday and I'm not sure which one.
Once a quarter.
Oh, is it once a quarter?
Yeah.
That's when I was on, it was.
Unless there's an issue.
Hi.
Hello.
Amanda Wilbert, HR manager currently. Um, our personnel board meetings aren't necessarily on a set day of the week, but we could make that happen depending on, um, the, the schedule of the, uh, member here. We do meet quarterly. Right now, we, our meetings primarily consist of electing an employee of the quarter. However, if there were to be a personnel board hearing regarding a personnel matter, it could definitely change and be more frequent. It just depends on when that need would occur. I can tell you in the past five years, we haven't had a personnel board meeting for a personnel issue, but it doesn't mean it can't happen in the future.
When I was on, the council member did not go to the personnel grievances or whatever because it would eventually maybe come back to the council, so it would be just the other people on the board, which means that the council member would not be involved in those, those meetings with personnel. And it was basically a vote on quarterly employees and, and yearly employees. It takes about twenty minutes at the meeting. It doesn't take very long.
Okay, so once a quarter for half hour or so?
I, I can do it if, so long as the meetings start on Mondays. Mondays I can't.
Okay.
So I don't mind being the, I don't have any real relationship with any of the staff, so I think it might be a good fit. But just Mondays are incredibly busy.
Okay, great. Thank you, council. Alright, and then next up is, um, I think we, that letter should have hit, oh, we didn't get the letter in there, darn. I received a letter, apologize I didn't get it in here, from, uh, Raina Avalon, who's the new chair of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. She's sent a letter out to all the, uh, councils in the Verde Valley asking for a representative, um, from council to serve. Not to serve, but to attend their meetings. Um, I've historically been attending the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition's meetings for a couple of years now and as I can. And I was on the Shelter Subcommittee of the Coalition for about a year. So I'm fine, uh, just continuing my, my attendance at these meetings. But I wanted to bring it forward to council to see if there's anybody else on council that would like to be an alternate in the event that I cannot meet.
I, I wouldn't mind being an alternate for you, absolutely. And attend, I'd love to attend once with you so I know what's going on. And then after that, just when you need me to.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. They've, they've just recently reformed, really, their, um, I mean, they've been meeting for a long time, then it dissolved and it formed into the greater, uh, I think they call it collective in Prescott. Um, but there's still a strong interest to have a homeless coalition here on the, in the Verde Valley. So they've kind of reformed, they've, uh, are now fallen under the umbrella of the Cornucopia Foundation, so they have the 501(c)(3) status, so they're, I think there's some good momentum and, um, we're trying to get a, a board put together so they can become their own 501(c)(3). So there's some exciting things going on, so I would appreciate if you could.
And I, I'd ask one more question. I know, and we can put it on a future council meeting, maybe you can direct the city manager. We don't have anybody attending any Northern Area Agency on aging meetings at all. Diane Jones was doing that and she, in fact, she still is doing it, but we don't have representation there and we really do need some. So maybe on a future meeting, we can discuss that.
Okay. Can we queue that up then for future?
I'm sorry, which?
Northern Area Agency on aging. We don't have anybody here attending any of those meetings.
Okay, thank you, council. Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so. Not on, no, because, uh, as, uh, Ms. Pfeiffer said, the, the personnel board assignment is ex officio and, and just participates in the, uh, employee of the quarter. And, and this was just an, an alternate to attend meetings, not represent the city in any official capacity.
Okay, very good. Okay, next up is claims and adjustments.
Move to pay the claims and adjustments?
Okay, Councilmember Allen made the motion and Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, I made the motion and Councilmember Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.